And welcome to a regularly scheduled meeting of the Common Council of the City of Hartford. Prior to this meeting, all proper notices were sent. I'd like to call this meeting to order and ask you if you'd please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, and for the last time, I'm going to ask her, roll call, Lori.
The mayor and all older persons are present except Alder Person Webb.
Thank you very much. Didn't mean to twist your...
No.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, we have before us unanimous consent agenda. Move to approve. Alder Person Turchi, seconded by Alder Person Garza.
Motion by Alder Person Turchi, seconded by Alder Person Garza, that the...
Following three items on the consent agenda are approved by the Common Council. The Common Council minutes of May 9th, 2023. The recommendation to approve Schnorenberg's floor covering, quote, "for an amount not to exceed $22,414.76 for replacement of cork flooring at the Jack Russell Memorial Library." And to purchase a new 2023 Ford F-250 pickup truck from Ewald Automotive Group for the Parks Buildings Department operations as specified, with options for $42,996 and accepting the Ewald Automotive Group trade-in offer for the 2009 Ford F-250 pickup in the amount of $4,000, the total cost and payment after trade-in not to exceed $38,996.
Boy, for a truck, I don't know any miles on it. At $4,000, you know, we even have a former councilperson, I think, that'd buy it for that.
Yeah, right.
It just seems low for a truck.
If you'd like to purchase it, I'm sure you all would be glad to sell it to you.
Yeah.
Carry the tires with you, because I'm pretty sure the rest of it's rusted out, but go ahead.
Yeah, pretty rusty.
Oh, well, see, and that's why I ask, so people don't call me later. So, wonderful, okay. We have unanimous consent agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those no. Motion carried, thank you. Communications.
I have nothing tonight.
Okay. Appearances and citizen comments at this time. Anybody wishing, any citizen wishing to come up and speak to the council? You have three glorious minutes, just come up to the podium and state your name and address. Any appearances? Third call. Okay, hearing none, mayor's report. I wanted to thank everybody that had anything to do with the car show. We had a wonderful car show. I mean, the weather was beautiful, we had a lot of people come out. Sometimes when it gets a little rainy or cloudy, some of the folks, especially those with convertibles, don't show up. But everybody showed up, which was great, including a lot of the people in our beautiful city and beyond. Our, the word has gotten out, of course, and so we have people from other communities come and enjoy the car show. I was very impressed with the cars that were out there. It was a tough decision. I did pick a 1958 Ford Etzel, robin's egg blue, stunning vehicle that was in the car. And it was really neat, because the owner of the car, older gentleman that was a little kid in 1958, actually went to the car show, fell in love with the Etzel, and had a picture of himself taken with a 1958 Etzel at the Ford Pavilion at the car show. So it was really neat. And I told him, as he came up, a thin little guy, he got the year's supply of custard from Culvers. And I said, "See, you get to look like me." Anyway, I got a laugh there, anyway. So, it was a good time, and I was very, very happy how it went off. So again, thank you to all of those, especially our Chamber of Commerce and the bid, who were responsible for helping with that, and Russ Krebs, who always parks the cars. God bless him, thank you very much, Russ. With that, we go to Alder manic requests. President? Resniak.
Just one item, seeing as Randy Witowsick's in the audience. I've had several requests, we need to get the fountains put in the mill pond, both the east and the main mill pond. So we need to get those installed and finish off that project.
Is that it?
That's it.
Super. Alder Person Carroll.
Nothing, your time, mayor.
Alder Person Reagan.
Nothing tonight, mayor.
Alder Person Garza.
Nothing tonight, mayor.
Alder Person Turchi.
Nothing tonight, mayor.
Alder Person Savage.
Yes. I am voting, or I want to reconsider the vote for the new housing, for the next generation housing.
Okay, thank you. Alder Person Carroll. Oh, excuse me, Alder Person Kohler, you guys look so much alike, I'm sorry.
Nothing tonight.
Alder Person Fulop.
Oh, thank you, your time, mayor, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mayor, is there anything else on your report tonight?
Uh, let's see. Well, I have communications, appearances, comments, mayor's report, Alder manic requests. Oh.
Oh.
It is, it is, yes, well sadly enough, it's not on my agenda, so...
It wasn't supposed to be. That's the call, they call a surprise.
And it worked, it surprised me.
It surprised the hell out of you.
Yes. Yes, there is, and I hope I didn't kind of give it away when I asked Lori to be the one who would let me know as far as the communications. A proclamation of 45 years of service by Lori Hetzel. Whereas, city clerk Lori Hetzel will be completing her employment with the City of Hartford after 45 years of outstanding service. Whereas Lori Hetzel began her city employment in 1978 at the, as a city bookkeeper, and became an accounting assistant in 1991, became the deputy treasurer in 1996, and was promoted to city clerk, a position that she's held since 2004. And whereas Lori Hetzel was responsible for 76 election workers and ran approximately 60 elections with a current count of registered city voters of 9,513. And whereas Lori Hetzel worked under six different mayors during her tenure, and whereas Lori Hetzel and her office of one full-time employee masterfully managed an election with skill and grace during a time of the pandemic, with the majority of the public voting from home. And whereas Lori Hetzel had the unprecedented responsibility of also running an early in-person election during the pandemic, following ever-changing safety protocols with calm and efficiency. And now therefore, let it be known by all that I, Timothy C. Maholic, mayor of the City of Hartford, on behalf of the entire city council, do hereby proclaim June 1st, 2023, as Lori Hetzel's completion of 45 years of City of Hartford service. And we unanimously approve by the Hartford City Council on this 23rd day of May, 2023. And I will ask even for the vote, asking for that approval of this phenomenal proclamation. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And the hammer says it, again, under my signature, which I will apply right here. And would ask Lori if she would come up so we could take a wonderful picture for the paper. Let's make sure that this...
So we don't have a paper?
And then you get three glorious minutes if you think you can put it all in.
Mayor and council, city staff and guests. I stand here tonight with very mixed emotions. I'm so excited to start the next chapter in my life, and yet so sad to end this one. Sorry. First and foremost, I would like to thank my family for all the support and encouragement they have given me over the years. My husband, Jeff, my daughter, Cassie, her husband, Nick, and my grandchildren, Hallie and Henry. They have always been my biggest cheerleaders, and I'm eternally grateful to have them in my life. Thank you to the mayor and council for your confidence in me. I hope that I've never let you down. Thank you to Steve for advising me and yet letting me run my own show. I'm very blessed and honored to have worked with many different coworkers over the years, and I will always be grateful to them for their teamwork and mentorship, but most of all, their friendship. We have worked hard together and have had a lot of fun. You are truly my work family. The best part of coming to work each day is you. I hold many wonderful memories of you all, and I wish the best to each and every one of you. To my election officials, thank you from the bottom of my heart. I could not have done all those elections without you and your dedication to making them run fair, efficient, and smoothly. I think we have a lot to be proud of. So I grew up five miles south of here, moved to Hartford when I got married in 1979, and have never wanted to move out of Hartford since. Just ask my husband, he can attest to that. I started here 45 years ago as the city bookkeeper, working under Shirley Ridker, and honored to now be the city clerk, working under Steve Volker. When I first started my career, I never imagined I would have the opportunity to work with such a talented and dedicated group of people. I've seen a lot of changes here in the City of Hartford. I can still remember the marble staircase leading to the second floor here in City Hall and the creak of the hardwood floor in the gymnasium. Yes, there was a gymnasium in here. I survived two major City Hall remodelings. Talk about chaos, but we sure appreciated and looked forwarded to our new offices. It was definitely worth it, both times. I remember working when they were redoing Main Street. We had all the windows open, because of course, we didn't have air conditioning back then. And we would have so much dust coming in that every day we had to wipe everything down, only to do it all over again the next day. Let me tell you, between the dust and the noise, we were sure happy when that project was completed. In my days here, the city garage moved from Johnson Street to the new one on Highway 60. The utility department moved from West Wisconsin Street to Highway 60. The library moved from within City Hall to its own building on Park Avenue. And the rec center moved from the old Washington School to a new building on North Rural Street. I ran about 60 elections with the help of my deputy clerk, Pat Borland, and now Samantha Walters. Their help was invaluable, and I'm truly appreciative of them. We even had recall elections and recounts in addition to the regular elections. When I became clerk, all three polling places were in this building. I can still remember running up and down between the three floors. Now they're in three separate buildings. I have worked with six mayors and countless other persons. I've had the pleasure to work with some great city administrators, Gary Koppelberger and Steve Volker, who have proven to be leaders, mentors, and friends. Everyone seems to ask, what are your plans for after you're retired? You need to have a plan. Well, my plan is simple. I plan on spending more time with my husband, whether here in Hartford or a cabin up north. Also with my daughter and her family. I can't wait to have more adventures with you, Cassie. And as far as my grandkids go, they have been making plans for me since I announced my retirement four and a half months ago. Now it's time to see what they have come up with. For many of you that know me well, I come from a big family, so getting the opportunity to have more time with my sisters is just an added bonus. In closing, I want to say good luck to the new city clerk, Shanna Crowcam. I'm confident you will do an excellent job. I will miss you all. I am humbled and honored to have had the privilege to work with all of you. If I leave a legacy behind, I hope it would be that I serve the citizens of Hartford with dignity and respect. Thank you.
Thank you very much. At this time, we go to the public hearing, item number nine. It's a petition for direct annexation by unanimous consent submitted by Ridgeway Investments LLC for approximately 11.69 acres located northeast of the intersection of State Trunk Highway 60 and Independence Avenue. Like to open the hearing and ask for a reading of the notice.
Please take notice that a public hearing will be held at 7:00 PM or thereafter on May 23rd, 2023, in the Common Council chambers at the lower level of City Hall, 109 North Main Street, by the City of Hartford Common Council to consider the following. A petition to annex property to the City of Hartford. The petitioned area consists of tax key number T6039300Z and is described as follows, 7520, 7542, West Highway 60. It contains 11.69 acres. Rezoning the petitioned area to B5 Highway Business District will be heard as well as an amendment of the official map. The purpose of the public hearing is to hear those persons who wish to express their opinions for or against the requested annexation, rezoning, and official map revision. A map and legal description of the parcel can be viewed at the Department of Planning and Zoning by appointment, 109 North Main Street, Monday through Friday, between the hours of 7:30 AM and 4:30 PM, dated this 5th day of May, 2023, published in the Daily News on May 5th, 2023, May 12th, 2023, and six notices were sent.
Thank you very much. We now go to explanation of hearing by staff. Are you taking this, Steve?
Yep.
Our city administrator, Steve Volker.
So, Shanna, pretty much covered most of the details. Again, it's 11.69 acres. It's on the corner by Quad Graphics for your information. It is being, again, requested by Ridgeway Investments LLC, which will house a future tractor supply company. Tractor Supply Company, I think most people know what that, what that is. And anyways, they have looked for different locations throughout the City of Hartford, and this location, which is in the town of Hartford, of course, but could be annexed in to the community. All the essentials for this building, including utilities and, of course, access, is available right there at that corner, so there is no major issues from staff viewpoint. And the recommendation from the planning commission was unanimously approved, and the staff recommends approval of the petition for direct annexation.
Thank you very much. At this time, next item is appearances for. Anybody wishing to appear for the annexation petition? Any one for? Just come up to the microphone, state your name and your address and/or business.
I'll try to keep this under two glorious minutes for you.
Actually, you get three, but okay.
So my name is Rukmanthi, I represent the developer, so the entity that has the land under contract. So, just here in support of the annexation, obviously, we aren't in support, but the... I guess usually I'm on the opposite side of this. I usually represent a lot of municipalities across Wisconsin. And if I were representing a municipality, I would pray for an annexation like this. It's almost a perfect square, it's contiguous, so we're really excited about the project. The site plan, we're still working on that. We've had a couple of back and forth with the DOT, so we have to change a couple of entranceways. But as far as the comp plan goes, you know, I'll defer to staff, but we feel that's consistent. The use and zoning designation is consistent with your long-range plans. So again, asking for your support today. We're happy to be working in Hartford and hoping to bring this project to your community. Thank you.
Just a quick question, if I may. Do you have a month and year that you're interested, that you're looking, kind of guesstimating, if you will?
I don't have an estimate. I know that the, my client is eager to get started, so they want to get shovels on the ground as soon as possible. So once we get all the approvals through, I think the, the plan is to start work is basically the, as soon as those approvals come through.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else appearances for? Appearances for? Hearing none, go appearances against. Anyone wishing to speak against the annexation petition? Anyone against? Third call, anyone against? Hearing none, discussion by council. Anyone, anyone, anyone? Don't hear anyone. I've been pushing for a tractor supply company, well, you know, for, I think, forever. So this is a wonderful fulfillment of that dream. Now we just have to get them to put a White Castle on the inside, I think. Okay. Wonderful, with that, we'll close the hearing and ask for possible action on ordinance 1469, an ordinance annexing territory to the City of Hartford. Alder Person Garza.
I'd like to make motion to annex the property.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Alder Person Fulop. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no.
Mayor, you need to suspend the rules.
Well, that was for suspension of the rules. To suspend the rules, yes.
Motion by Alder Person Garza, seconded by Alder Person Fulop, that the rules be suspended for immediate consideration of proposed ordinance number 1469.
For suspension, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carried. See, they never put that in there. So, Alder Person Garza, you, yeah, a motion. And a second by Alder Person Fulop.
Motion by Alder Person Garza, seconded by Alder Person Fulop for the adoption of proposed ordinance number 1469.
For adoption of the annexation, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carried, thank you. Next, we have standing committee reports, Public Works.
There's a consideration for funds to be able to, I think it's remediate, is that right, John?
To remediate and close the contamination issue at Centennial Park.
So my understanding is, I think it's 170,000 to pull out of our fund balance. In addition to that, I don't think we can continue with the project unless we approve. Am I right on that, John?
Yes.
So, I think I used the term uncle, uncle, so I'm not sure in this case we came across contaminated soil, and we need to address it.
Right, I was interested that it's discussion consideration of authorization of expenditure of undesignated funds, but it doesn't actually list the dollar amount on what we would be voting on.
172, I think. An executive summary.
I thought it was 272, isn't it?
272.
272, sorry, guys.
It's just not on the agenda.
Right.
Dollar figure's not on the agenda.
Do we have an exact dollar figure, so we know what we're spending?
Yeah, it's in the executive summary.
I understand that, but normally, we always list it.
And under screen here, Mr. Mayor, environmental services over a three-year period, 2023 through 2026, 90,150 to Stantec. And then a change order to Wondra to remove two feet of soil, additional two feet of soil from the site and bring in new clean soil and topsoil to replace it at 182,515. The total request from the fund balance is 272,665 dollars. That does include contingency.
Super.
So I'm hoping we come in under that.
And that's a good thing.
Public...
We would hope you would, too. Super, okay.
Public Works recommended, moving forward.
Okay. Any, you would go for any questions?
Where does the bad dirt go?
Bad dirt will go to the GFL landfill in Mayville, or between Iron Ridge and Mayville.
Either that or by the elementary school, I was told, they were looking for it. That's a joke.
Wow.
Bad joke.
Okay, no further questions. We will take up the authorization of expenditure of undesignated funds to complete the removal and replacement of that contaminated soil at Centennial Park. Do we have a motion to approve by President Resniak?
No, I did not.
Seconded by Alder Person Carroll.
Motion by Alder Person Resniak, seconded by Alder Person Carroll, approving the expenditure of undesignated funds to complete the removal and replacement of contaminated soil at Centennial Park and authorize appropriate staff to execute the environmental services agreement between the City of Hartford and Stantec for investigation and remedial planning for Centennial Park's soil management and a contract change order to Wondra Construction for removal and replacement of the contaminated soil.
With that, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carried, thank you. We go, no ordinances, first and second reading. We go to the city administrator's report, Steve.
Item number eight, discussion consideration of authorizing of appropriate staff to execute the environmental service agreement between the City of Hartford and Stantec for the investigation and remedial planning for the 24, 28 South Main Street properties. And you all received a copy of the executive summary. We've been talking about this for the last couple of meetings. This has to do with contamination found at the site of the current poorhouse parking lot, which again, was previously at Dry Cleaners. And then contamination was found in that area, again, on several occasions. And again, we are now tracking that back, and then we will look to remediate the situation. John, can you tell them more?
Just one, one more note. I came to you two weeks ago and asked for the mayor's authorization for the mayor to sign the grant that will pay for this work. And I forgot to ask for authorization to sign the contract to get the work going. So that's what we're here for tonight, is to get, we did get the grant, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And it's, it's all set. All we need is to sign a contract with the environmental consultant, and we can get going.
Super, thank you.
Yeah.
Yes, President Resniak.
And the grant pays for everything but, what, $10,000 on our part?
Yes, yes. And the county is also assisting through their SRC program.
Okay, very good.
Thank you, Washington County.
Yes, Josh is here.
I know. Super. Alrighty. With that, would look for a motion to approve?
Motion approved.
Alder Person Kohler, seconded by Alder Person Turchi.
Motion by Alder Person Kohler, seconded by Alder Person Turchi, authorizing appropriate staff to execute the environmental services agreement between the City of Hartford and Stantec for investigation and remedial planning for the 24 through 28 South Main Street properties.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carried, thank you. Steve?
Item B, discussion consideration of Alder manic reconsideration request for the MOA with Washington County for next-generation housing. Under the situation, and any alderman who votes against a motion can request, after receiving additional information or clarification to information, they can request for a reconsideration of a previous vote. That has to be done the meeting, immediately prior, or after, the original vote. We have received a request for reconsideration by Alder Person Savage regarding the vote taken last week, meeting, on the MOA with Washington County for the next-generation housing. Please understand, there is no change to the MOA. You're voting on the exact same MOA with Washington County for this project. To be very clear about this, the information, and I'm not speaking on behalf of Tina, Alder Person Savage, excuse me. But again, the additional information which was requested and given was, could the project be created without the addition of multifamily housing in the sense of apartments? And the answer to that question was yes. So with that, I will let Alder Person Savage explain.
Okay, so if the plan before the Common Council is limited to the owner-occupied housing portion, including single-family housing and the townhouses, I believe the memorandum of agreement should be reconsidered, as I was not prior to the conversations before this. So based on the new information, I'll be making the motion to reconsider the vote.
Okay, we have a motion to reconsider. Would look for a second?
Do we have discussion or no?
Well, yeah, after we get a second. Do we have a second to reconsider?
No seconds.
Okay, Dennis, seconds, discussion by council. Please, go ahead.
So, so I understand the, you know, your request. I understand, too, that, that most of us, anyway, the voting members are the only ones that can do this. And I do understand, and I do know for a fact, that you have been influenced and had been called prior to this actual request for the reconsideration. And, you know, from a non-voting member within the council. So to me, I don't think, what I want to say is, I think that a lot of people didn't hear really my point. I don't really think we need a reconsideration. When, when we voted no, what we voted no is for the memorandum to be signed with the county so that the county would be part of the entire process. If, what I had stated, I'm going to be a little bit more clear on how I stated and what I stated, and why I voted no. I didn't vote no to stop growth, I didn't vote no to turn around and to designate what's in... and to designate what's in the growth plan right now, or what's in, gonna be in that. What I stated was, we have to look at, as a city, what do we want to do? Do we have multiple properties that we can get developed? We can develop. And what do we need to do? And, um, and I've been in, I've been in sourcing, I've been in, in, um, in business for over thirty years and I deal with this a lot. And the reason I say we don't need the memorandum to go forward is because we need to understand what we want to do. We need to, as a city, need to understand that we're gonna move forward. We're gonna do what we want to do with the property. I understand the memorandum takes any legality of what we decide to do in there, but what it doesn't take is some of the, the, um, the sense of obligation. And you get that, and that's an inside thing. I'm, as a sourcing manager, I do a lot with suppliers. There's many suppliers over thirty years. I mean, I couldn't tell you how many golf, golf parties I've been invited to, how many ski trips, how many trips around. And, and nothing, no tie, no strings attached, until they come back and say, hey, listen, we're gonna get this pricing cruise put through, or so on and so forth. My point here is we do not need the authorization, the memorandum of, um, with the county to make the decision what we want to do. I completely understand what your thoughts are. I completely understand the direction you want to go. My point here is, we need to do this by ourselves. We don't need to have the thought of, hey, okay, we did it. We want to do this, but you know what? Maybe we should add this in because the county did that favor for us, because they paid for the thing. Guys, we just spent two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars on land to, to pull two feet out of there. I was sitting in the back of the room before this meeting started and, and believe it or not, the mayor, out of his mouth, made a comment about, we have more money in our general fund than we need to have in the general fund. And what I'm saying here is, what we need to do, the reason we're pushing for the memorandum, the reason they're pushing is to get, is, is our next step in this process, and that's to get the engineering study. I agree, we should get the engineering study. But why can't we pay for it ourselves, decide what we're gonna want to do with it? If, and at some time, we decide we're gonna go down a different path, we can also then invite other, other parties into it. But we need to be able to make our decision on what we want to do with that property without any sense of obligation, knowing that, and I understand the county's not gonna claw back and this and that, but it's still the thought of, they helped us through it. We didn't have to pay a dime for it. I mean, to me, and that's what I was trying to tell you guys. I don't want to give a false hope. I don't want to tell the county, we want to take the, we're gonna take their money, but guess what? We're not gonna use it, right? My fear is, my fear is, once we go down this path with this memorandum, we will be tied with, with the county. I understand that they're being, understanding they'll let us out. It's with certain, um, certain exits, but we're still gonna be tied there. What I'd like to do is move forward right now to understand what we want first, and if that's part of it, then that could be a part of it later. Um, and, and so, again, I understand where you're coming from. I understand that, you know, you were solicited, and would you change your mind? Did you have all the information? I understand all that happened. What I'm saying, and maybe I wasn't clear before, and if I'm not clear now, please ask some questions, but I really do not believe we need to go down a path with the memorandum to move forward with this, um, with any kind of development, whether it's in the, um, in the AD, um, in the ADHC, or whatever that group is called down there, or any place like that, at this point. We could do it ourselves and, and make a clear, conscious decision without any ties or obligations, or sense of ties and obligations.
Anybody else, uh, any comments, questions, Alderperson Rosniak?
Steve, I got a question for Tom Hosted. Can we have him come to the podium? Is that gonna work?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. Tom, as you know, I supported this from the beginning and I still support this project. Can this project proceed and succeed without rental apartments?
Yes, it can. It wouldn't be our preference, but yes, it certainly can.
It could.
Do that. Um, we can certainly look, there, there is a big need for, um, apartments in Hartford and across the county, and we can proceed with contacting developers to do that someplace else in Hartford. So, uh, this, this project can go forward without rental units.
Okay, thank you.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, go please.
Yeah, so, sir Tom, a quick question. As I understand, the property that we're working with is obviously through the whole, um, county, with, through the whole, um, process with the, um, industrial parking through the HEAC. You're technically kind of the owners of the property, and that's the direction.
We are.
Do you feel, I guess, and this is a loaded question, and I didn't ask you in prompt, so I didn't prompt him up there.
Hey Joe, can you pull your microphone just up?
Could, do you feel that, do you feel that we could do, if we did what I'm asking, look at doing this, start this process without the, the, um, uh, the county's, the county's help, without this agreement of memorandum and moving forward and still being able to develop and be, um, uh, um, um, uh, which is what I'm looking for, we, we can, we can do this with, without that process?
I think we can.
Okay. I understand it's a loaded question.
What I want to make sure we don't lose sight of is, there's a, there's a sense of urgency to this.
And, and I don't disagree.
We are at housing gridlock here in Hartford. There are no apartments. There are no existing homes for sale. Uh, I, I think there are two or three existing homes for sale. Uh, and the new homes that are being built are way above the financial reach of the people who live and work here.
Right.
So, we need to do something, and we need to do something quickly. So, I want to make sure that we don't take this action that you're proposing, um, as a delaying or stalling tactic.
No, no.
I want to move forward with, we need to move forward with that engineering study.
I don't, I don't disagree with you, and that's why I stated the comment that I think we should fund our own engineering study, make our own decisions as a group. We are partnered with you on this one and move forward as that goes, and then decide on what we want to do, and then wh- whom all comes into play. So, I don't disagree with you. I know we have the problem with housing. I know other communities as well do, and I think that's why there's a big push on this. So, um, again, I just wanted to, just to ask you if you felt comfortable as a landowner that we could, if we continue going, because this is the next step, we gotta get it done, if we went through and did something like this. And, uh, with the confirmation from the mayor this, earlier, uh, this evening on a side conversation, I think that, um, we could definitely, uh, work as a, as a, as a committee to make this work for you, so.
Good. I, I, I've always viewed this council as pro-growth. You, you took one of those steps tonight with the approval of the annexation, uh, bringing a, a strong new retailer to Hartford. You, Highway sixty is aligned with your decisions, uh, that you've made with regard to growth. So, um, I, I encourage you to continue to support growth. How this plays out in terms of emotion, I don't know. We'll have to rely on Steve and his expertise for that.
Mayor, um, can I clarify something?
Absolutely.
We don't, we don't do a lot of reconsiderations here. This is probably the first one we've done in eight years that I've been here. Um, what you're voting on in B is, do you recognize that she has, Alderperson Savage, has a means to ask for a, a reconsideration? C is where you can debate if you should or should not vote for the final thing. B is only simply stating, do you believe that she has the means and the reasons to ask for reconsideration? So, I'm just, not to, not to interrupt your, your discussions, which is good discussions. I'm just simply saying, that should be under C, not B.
I, I apologize, because I felt that it was, the discussion was to consider, um, the reconsidered request, and I was just asking and mentioning that I don't know if we even needed reconsidering a quest, because it's already part of our decision is no, when she was asking, what she needed. So, that's why I went into that. But I can move it whichever part, because it's, it's there.
I believe Steve is correct. So, what we're going to do is ask, as regards to, uh, item B, discussion and consideration of automatic reconsideration, uh, for MOA with Washington County for next-generation housing. Are you handing this back to me for the vote then?
That would be correct.
I got a question.
Thank you very much, okay.
Okay, absolutely, Alderperson Phillip.
Yeah, this is, this is interesting to me that we're, we're doing this reconsideration, and you gave us a, a nice little article on, on, on rescind and reconsidered. Is there any logistics or rules in Robert's Law that says the original voting party has to be present to be able to do this reconsideration when we originally voted on this? Or this is separate from that, or that relates to item C? Am I understanding that right?
It, it does not, it does not mean that the, the entire voting party has to be present, or has to be a part of the vote.
Okay, thank you.
You bet. Did you have one, uh, Jeff?
Yeah, I just, to, to administration, Alderperson Savage has the right, and it's within the rules for the consideration, and would have been brought to the council, correct?
I'm sorry, I, I couldn't hear you.
So, what I'm saying is that we're voting that she has the right to rescind?
Yes, based on the information which she's given, that with this body has the ability to reconsider it. You're not, you're not saying yes or no to the final vote.
I, I, I understand that. So, based on the information or the ability to potentially change the design, does that give her the right to rescind? I don't believe it does. Because I mean, that's just, that's, I mean, that's just a design, right? And the design is like, not a hundred percent already signed, sealed, and delivered. It's just a design. So, I mean, what information did she not have prior to that? It was just a rough design of it. We were voting on the memo, memorandum of agreement, okay?
Yes.
So, what information did she not have at that time of the vote? She's talking about, can we change the design?
Right.
Right? That, what, that's, that's not what we voted on last time, under my understanding.
Correct. You voted, you voted on a document of agreement with the parties. She, she voted on that, again, I don't want to speak on behalf of Alderperson Savage. She's saying she agreed on that based on the belief that the agreement would include apartments. And the agreement doesn't say anything about apartments. Matter of fact, if you read it.
It doesn't say anything.
It said nothing about it. But her belief was it, it, that, that was what she was voting on. So, because she has been corrected as far as what she was voting on, which again, has not changed, there's no, no, nothing changed in it. Uh, again, she's asking for reconsideration. That is her request.
You're right. Alderperson Phillip.
I've got a point of order question here.
Oh, please, go ahead.
Um, I believe, if I remember my past, uh, experience on the council, that when a reconsideration comes up, that it has to be one of the people that voted, um, to second that, not just anybody on the council?
No, anybody who voted against the motion.
Which was the prevailing side.
Correct.
I just wanted to clarify.
That's why you received that document on it.
Okay, Alderperson Phillip.
When we had conversation about this with the NGH, did we not say that that document was flexible? We had conversation about the mix of what the particular town homes to apartments versus what would be, you know, owner-occupied housing? And we had, we had consideration of that. We had conversation of that and said, hey, you know what? The motion was to move forward and we have flexibility in the NGH design. Does that add anything to the information that was presented in that case? Or was it Alderman Savage not?
I, I, I couldn't tell you, and we wouldn't have documentation as far as what was said back and forth, um, it, last meeting versus the meeting before that, versus the meeting before that, versus the closed session before that.
It's all in the minutes.
They're, they're not recorded?
Uh, I, I couldn't tell you if it was, it was or not that.
They were in the minutes.
Uh, Alderperson Turchi.
So, I have a great memory. That's one aspect and strength that I have. John stood at that podium and said, the engineering study would be about thirty percent done, and we could review it and take a look at it. So, it was very clear during the meeting, the last meeting, of what that design looked like. So, I still contend Alderman Savage does not have standing for this.
That doesn't count as stand.
Okay, I just, I don't think she does.
So, my, my, my point is then vote it down. Vote down, you believe, all three of you believe that she does not have the right to ask for reconsideration. So, vote it down.
Okay, I'm just trying to make the point. Thank you.
I do have a question.
Please, go ahead, Alderperson Savage.
Are reconsidering it, it still doesn't, I still don't have to vote. Yes, do you know what I mean? Exactly. I can vote however I want. I just want more information. I want to see more plan. I want to get more detail.
Absolutely.
I was not privy to the conversations before this.
Right.
Correct?
Yes.
Okay.
The, uh.
That's all I'm saying.
Absolutely, and I fully understand that. And again, one of the things that we're looking at is just for, uh, when we talk about standing, when you're asking for a reconsideration, th- that is a very, very broad thing, having been part of them. So, it, it doesn't matter if she's, what she's saying. It, it's her understanding and her want for a reconsideration, not what passes any individual, any other individuals muster as regards to how that would move forward. So, uh, you, you can certainly check it out. I mean, I've got my copy of Robert's Rules, so, uh, that's not how a reconsideration works. It's very loose as far as what you can reconsider on. All you have to do is be an individual who voted on the successful side that you wish to have to reconsider the vote. You don't have to spell out chapter and verse as to why, so, uh, just so you're aware. Steve, did you have anything else?
No. Again, we're still on B, just to remind everybody.
That is correct, we're on B, absolutely. Again, for the discussion and consideration of automatic reconsideration request for a memorandum of understanding. I did want to do a comment only because, uh, Alderperson Kohler did mention, uh, a comment that I made, and I absolutely admit to making that I think that we have an awful lot of money in our undesigned fund balance. I often jokingly call it the, we taxed you too much, but we're not giving it back balance. I do the same for the seven billion dollars that the state has taken, and we call it a surplus. Uh, however, that money, the amount of money that we have in there does affect our bond rating. The more money we seem to have in there, the better our bond rating, because with people that borrow you money, the less you show you need it, because you have the money to pay for it, the better interest rate you get, which is a nice thing to have. Uh, when it comes to how taxes work and Alderperson Kohler's comparison of individuals that are trying to sell you something, it might take you to a ballgame or something of that nature, and then have an expectation of what's going up with the price increase. I'm looking at it from a position of, we have taxpayers. And out of those pockets from all of those taxpayers comes a lot of taxes. Sales tax, state income tax, property tax, which includes the county. A lot of money comes out of those pockets, okay? And it, it ends up residing, some of it that is not immediately spent, in pools all over the place. You have a state bu, uh, state surplus, we've got, uh, uh, extra money from the county, we've got our own undesigned fund balance. And when it comes to where that money comes from, a select few get to take any money out of those areas, uh, that, that we don't have direct control over. We pretty much, because of this, uh, uh, august body here with our city council, have the ability to take money out of our undesigned fund balance. We, we can't stick our hand in county or state things. We have to get all sorts of approvals. Uh, I was the one who also said that I, if we're going to be taking any money from the county, I would like it put in, and they very graciously accepted the fact that we don't have to pay it back should we not move forward beyond the education. So, why in God's name would I decide that I want three hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars to come out of our fund, our undesigned fund balance, when the county has so graciously stepped up and said, uh, well, we'll take it and, and the strings will not be there? Personally, I don't have all these warm, fuzzy feelings as regards to where the money comes from, uh, regarding, especially regarding the county. I'm, I'm not going to, uh, let the brow beat me into getting the three hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars back should we decide not to move forward. And I think that the county executive who happens to be here understands that. Uh, so, we have an understanding. I'm not going to be swayed by that. I realize that we're spending this money to get engineering funds done that's coming out of county, which means it's spread over a hundred and thirty-six thousand, uh, of folks in the county rather than the sixteen thousand here in the city, which to me makes a heck of a lot of sense. Which is why I would urge you to move forward, that if, uh, our, uh, uh, some of the individuals on this common council have a problem with the fact that they're worried about, uh, uh, how we're going to feel about it. Uh, personally, and with no offense meant, that's on them. It's certainly not on me. I'm going to move forward very, uh, honestly and, and forthrightly and not let any, where the money came from going to sway mine. I don't usually vote unless there's a tie, uh, but I'm going to make sure that, uh, we do everything in our power to make sure that we're doing everything for the benefit of the individuals in the city of Hartford. And that's basically what I would encourage everyone here to do. And taking three hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars out of our own fund balance when we have the money available from the county, to me is a fool's errand. So, with that.
Thanks for that. That's really appreciated. Thank you.
Any, any other comments, questions, concerns? Hearing none, uh, we would, uh, look for a motion. Oh, I have a motion and a second already, actually, which is one we've got, so. Uh, with no further discussion, all those in favor of automatic consideration request for the memorandum of understanding, please, uh, signify by saying. for the memorandum of understanding, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no?
No.
Okay, let's have a split vote here, if we could.
Alder Person Rosniak?
Aye.
Alder Person Savage?
Aye.
Alder Person Phillips?
Nay.
Alder Person Turchi?
Nay.
Alder Person Kohler?
Nay.
Alder Person Carroll?
Aye.
Alder Person Reagan?
Aye.
Alder Person Garza?
No.
Four, four.
Yep, four, four.
Aye.
It's five, four.
Thank you.
Item C, discussion and consideration of Washington County Next Generation Housing Fund Memorandum of Agreement between the following parties, Washington County, the City of Hartford, and the Hartford Area Development Corporation. I think we've already wrestled this one, but by all means, feel free to continue to discuss this if you'd like.
Direct your questions to Steve, please.
Any questions? Again, the memorandum of understanding has not changed. Any questions? Any questions?
If you wanted to hear more.
I mean, just because I'm reconsidering, I'm not locked in. Is that correct?
That's correct, absolutely.
But you want to learn more, so if you have questions.
Yep, I wanted to learn more about the housing, the wetlands, I mean, the taxes. I mean, are we locked in as citizens with the taxes?
The taxes.
Like, are we going to be taxed if something happens?
So, in the creation...
So, if it doesn't go right, like if something happens.
I'm going to go way outside, I think the question is, but I think where you're going for it. If you create a TID, and the TID does not satisfy the debt, it does come back on, and you've extended the TID beyond the life, and done everything you can with a distressed TID, an extremely distressed TID, everything else, that would roll back onto your general fund, yes? That's what, how a TID rolls, pardon the pun.
How long would be the, how long would the TID be?
Yeah, because it's a mixed-use TID, it's a 20-year TID, and again, you can extend it beyond the 20-year if it becomes distressed. Is that your question?
Okay, I have another question, so.
Sure.
If somebody, okay, so it's owner-occupied.
Correct.
If somebody leaves within the five years, what happens?
Under the, and actually, I'll ask representatives from, I'll ask Josh to come up. If somebody was to, there is a built-in situation in which if an individual would purchase it, understanding they're getting a pretty good deal on a house, right? So, let's say 325. And within five years, they flip it, okay? There is a prorated profit in which they can make. Josh, is that kind of a reasonable way to say it?
This is Josh Schollman, the county executive from Washington County.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you, city administrator. The short answer is yes, on the home ownership piece, because similar to an industrial park where you've built all the infrastructure and made it shovel-ready, that's the basic same premise that you're using in this current design, that you would have a shovel-ready project that homes could be built at. There is a savings by the city doing that work, by going through the engineering process, and by preparing the land so it's shovel-ready for a private builder to sell to a private owner. To manage for that, your county, your city attorney, Ian Proust, came up with the idea of creating a deed restriction where, that basically the investment that the city made, the incentive to move someone in, they have to earn back by staying in that home for a certain period of time. I'm assuming part of the reason that HADC is in the room is they're hoping it's people who work in that industrial park right next door. So, the goal of the program is to have somebody who lives here, works here, at least for five years, and if they decide to bolt, that deed restriction will require them to pay a portion of it back. There are literally no free lunches in the design of the program. And it was very explicit, as the city administrator noted, in Next Generation Housing Agreement, I didn't want, and I explicitly said, "We will not fund any apartments. There will be no leases included." HADC, as Tom just stated a few minutes ago, has a different perspective on that, but Next Generation Housing is all home ownership-based. As a matter of fact, the request that started the process that led us to Next Generation Housing came from this community. You asked for it, we helped build it out, and now we have a mechanism with money that our kids are going to pay for the next several generations, and hopefully they have houses that are helping, being helped to be built through this program. All that they have to pay for, and nobody gets for free.
I remember the volunteer aspect to this, could you just clarify that for us and the TV viewers?
Yes, absolutely. So, first thing, please understand, Next Generation Housing has nothing to do with the earning back. The program we're asking you to consider has literally nothing to do with the down payment incentive for how it might be paid back. They're two totally separate programs. One is a complete supply-side economics program, and let me just take you a step back to housing in America, because I know there's concerns on this council and all throughout the county about what role the county, or what role any level of government plays in housing. The government plays a role in housing and has since the 1930s. The Federal Housing Administration financed most of the development that happened post-World War II. Like, every neighborhood that was built, have you ever heard of Levittown in Pennsylvania? And every development that had like that, happened like that, they were financed by the Federal Housing Administration. All of that continued through the 60s and the 70s until private banks got into the business. And then we regulated that ability away, too, in 2008 when the housing market crashed. So, literally, there is nobody providing financing to develop the small types of houses, starter homes, that most people in America start off in, and almost all people who work in the industrial park can afford to live in. So, that is what Next Generation Housing is about. It's a financing mechanism. It's allowing for a small builder who doesn't have deep enough pockets to build a full development, to be able to build a small house, to sell to a private buyer who has to earn it back. Now, the down payment incentive is a separate program, it's completely different. And if you're against VA loans and you're against FHA loans, then you should also be against the down payment program. But if you've ever taken one of those loans, then you'd be a hypocrite if you were to be opposed to the down payment program, because that also has to be earned back. And it is completely separate. We're not asking the city council to consider any participation in that program, because whether you vote for Next Generation Housing or not, the down incentive and pay, down payment incentive program could happen in your city with or without you knowing it. It could happen on a house for sale, although there's only two in all of Hartford as we're speaking right now. It could happen in a house here in Hartford for under $320,000 as soon as the program is up and running. Has nothing to do with what we're asking the city council to participate in. They can work together, but they're not one program, they're two separate programs.
Tony, are there any other questions? Any other questions?
I don't have one, but it's one more quick comment. And, you know, we talk about Next Generation Housing, and you call it Next Generation Housing, and every community, every county has their term of Next Generation Housing. That is like the newest term out there. It's basically the same thing. I know for a fact Campbell Sport's putting in, I think it's Campbell Sport out there is putting in Next Gen, they're calling it Next Generation Housing. They're putting homes on a half acre, over $500,000 out in the middle of a farm field. They're calling it a Next Generation Housing. There is Next Generation Housing being proposed down in the Brookfield area that are Next Generation Housing, but these are some multi-families, these are some multimillion-dollar homes. What we consider as Next Generation Housing, I agree with you, it's a term, it's a key, it's a key term, it's something that's new, it's a buzzword out there. Next generation, it's the next generation we got to go. What generation is it? The question that we got to keep asking ourselves is, what are we, what is the purpose of that property? What do we really want out of it? And what do we consider affordable? Because I hate to tell you, I don't think a $350,000 home, or that range that we're looking at, is an affordable home for a new, a new young family, or somebody looking to buy a house. That's not what this one is. What we did do, and why I believe Tom and the HDAC is going back in and asking for other options within that property to keep people within that, within his industry district to work, live, obviously, you know, close to it. So, that was why some of them were brought in. I was the one who brought it up that thought maybe, maybe more townhomes, and they could be, they could be owner-occupied. We could do quads, we can do other things that could be owner-occupied. Doesn't always have to be apartments. But again, when we talk about it, I'm just going to say it, you know, what do we want out of Next Generation Housing? What do we want to help our community without having any, as the mayor so kindly opposed my thoughts, but having any kind of defense, any kind of sense of obligation by going down a path of a direction that we're not quite sure we need to go down yet at this point? Okay? Thank you.
And I'm glad you brought that up, Alderman. As a matter of fact, the community that asked for the study to tell us what the price point should be is Hartford. And the one that paid for the study was the county to point to, what is the price point? $320,000. What are we designing? $320,000. It's literally the missing middle. And yes, I know people throw around terms all the time. In fact, I think it's in this city council chambers that I've heard a dozen times, low-income, high-density, government-subsidized housing is not what we want in any community in Washington County. In fact, when I knock doors, I hear it everywhere. So much so, that I opposed putting apartments into this program because of that exact reason. Nobody wants to have government-subsidized housing, which is why we're not proposing it. We're proposing a program that has to be paid back, where people own their homes. And right now, the free market isn't meeting the demand, and it's because the federal government has stopped it from happening. So, I understand, we would love to get it below 250,000, but that would require you to change a hell of a lot of your zoning regulations, and your permit fees, and your impact fees, and we're not asking you to do that. All we're asking you to do is collaborate. There are no strings, especially for the first 300 and some thousand dollars. We want to have a design that can actually work, that you can all say, yeah, this is home ownership, and we are the antithesis of low-income, high-density, government-subsidized housing. We believe in home ownership, because it's the path to the American dream. The people who work, or hopefully one day will work in that industrial park in this community for our county, are relying on you and us to find a solution. And I can tell you, because I'm on the task force of the National Counties Association with 50 other counties trying to solve this problem, no one's solving it. There are communities, you're correct, that are trying to brand things. Brookfield is a great example. They just killed the development with wheel and sprocket that they thought was going to have some semblance of affordability. And they killed it, because they couldn't figure out, what do we really want that corner to look like? The bottom line is, we as governments in general are the ones stopping the types of homes that most of us in America started in. It's us. It's you, it's me, it's the federal government, it's the state government, we've all contributed to it. You have an opportunity to work with us. The county isn't going to try to tell you what to do. The task force that built the Next Generation Housing Memorandum of Understanding includes your city administrator. It was requested by your community. Like, we are trying as hard as we can to work in a collaborative way with you. I'm asking you to please collaborate with us, and do it in a way that pushes home ownership. Not, we don't need more Gen Z and more millennials stuck in rentals. We need them to build and own homes, so they can build generational wealth and not be on the government dole, ever. Please help us do that. Please vote yes.
Any other questions? If not, Mayor?
Thank you very much. This is under the city administrator's point 13, C, discussion and consideration for Washington County Next Generation Housing Fund Mender, Funding Memorandum of Agreement between the following parties, Washington County and the City of Hartford, and the Hartford Area Development Corporation. So, do we have a...
You do not have a motion yet.
Okay, so it'll look a motion to approve.
I'll move to approve.
Move to approve by Dennis.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Doug. We'll have a roll call vote.
Kohler?
Nay.
Alder Person Savage?
Nay.
Alder Person Reagan?
Aye.
Alder Person Carroll?
Aye.
Alder Person Turchi?
Nay.
Alder Person Rosniak?
Aye.
Alder Person Garza?
Nay.
Alder Person Phillips?
Nay.
Five, three, no's.
Okay. For adjournment, Alder Person Turchi, seconded by Alder Person Carroll.
Motion by Alder Person Turchi, seconded by Alder Person Carroll, to adjourn at 8:06 PM.
Please stick around, we are going to have a little refreshments in consideration of the last council meeting of Lori Hetzel.
And it was a good one.
You got your money's worth.
All those with favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those no, we are adjourned. Thank you.